Marquis.
Here.
Myers. Donna? Myers?
Hi, it was muted.
Here. Sergeant?
Here.
Sweeney Moran?
Here.
This?
Here.
Okay, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll just keep working on that and we'll get it right eventually. So, welcome to another Zoom board meeting for the Boulder Valley School District. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, specifically engaged lives. So, as we start every meeting, we'll begin with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board President Marquis, Board members. It's good to see you all. Eight days of school left, which I know that students and parents alike across our district are excited for. It's been a long few, a couple of months for sure, as we think about how we've had to respond and how our families have had to respond, our students have had to respond. And just as we've kind of started every meeting since this pandemic has started, want to thank our community, thank our teachers, our students, our parents, everybody coming together under these circumstances. So, I have two big topics I'd like to cover today during superintendent's comments. The first is, Board members, you've been receiving emails, I've been receiving a lot of emails around, what's our plan for the fall? And so, we do have a plan. We'll be releasing some communication directly after tonight's meeting to our parents to talk about the different phases of reintroduction. And so, I believe Margaret Crespo, our area superintendent for the Southwest Support Network, is on the line and I'm going to ask her to walk you through a little bit about, not only what are we planning in regards to the five phases of reintroduction, but also to get into the reintroduction task force that we're putting together. So, we're making sure that we're not only utilizing the thinking of our team, but giving a place and space for those in our community and those that are providing input and who we're learning from, not just throughout Colorado, but across the country, on how do we do this well and how do we prepare for a future that, this closer it gets, I think the clearer it will be. But right now, still pretty fuzzy and I know that folks that are in our community, parents, kids, they want answers on what our plan is. And so, with that, I will turn it over to...
Thanks very much, Dr. Anderson. Margaret Crespo, area superintendent, as was mentioned, of the Southwest Network. Randy Barber's going to start by screen sharing our update. We have a couple of slides just to represent the letters, the letter that is being sent out this evening. I will share that part of our process is to connect with a lot of our partners, both regionally, locally, as well as nationally, around what are the areas where they have learned? What have been the struggles? How can we work together to develop a plan that meets the needs of students, staff, and community in a way that really focuses on the robust issues related to education, both through home learning and in-person instruction? So, as part of the process this evening, families, community, teachers, and all of you have received or will be receiving a letter here shortly, once this is completed, that gives us a framework for where we're headed. We have five phases in our reintroduction model. And part of this process has been with talking with local school districts around us to see what is really the most comprehensive plan. Obviously, all of this is based on guidance from our Boulder County Health Partners, Broomfield County Health, the state, CDC, CDE, as well as pretty much every other acronym or initial that you can come up with, because this plan has to be developed in conjunction for what's right for the safety of our students. So, this is the larger picture. You can see the five phases are labeled there on the right-hand row. And then, we have the column that really describes, in short order, the picture, you could call it, of what it would look like. So, at the high level, Randy, if you'll click for me. At the highest, at the first level, you have Phase 1, which is kind of where we are right now, essentially, stay-at-home. We have students that are learning in their home environment. It's the most restrictive situation that we have. Certainly, even in our stay-at-home order, as we move into the fall, we will be providing more in-depth opportunities for curriculum, instruction, robust online blended opportunities, again partnering with our partners and aligning very closely to our strategic plan. One of the benefits of having a strategic plan that is so well thought out and brought through our community and to our stakeholders, we are able to do any level of instruction, any level of our work to meet the needs of our most diverse learners in a way that really capitalizes on our strength as a district. So, you can see that first checkmark is at-home learning. I just want to say thank you to the comms team for making this look amazing, because we wanted to make sure that it looked a little bit different for this presentation than just for the letter at home, so that it would jump out more about what the phase was. So, thank you for that. Okay, so the second piece for us is the safer-at-home, which means that we have to have restrictions in place, but we've got some flexibility and we can do some in-person learning activities. And that may be small groups of students or prioritizing students who may not have access to education in the home learning environment. Certainly, as much as we try, for those opportunities, we want to make sure that those that are not met, we can do that with connections and obviously using family permission. Obviously, in this Phase 2, most of the students would continue in home learning. And you can see that each of these phases becomes a little bit less restrictive through the process. And I will share here that one of the reasons that we went with five phases was that we wanted to make sure that between this phase that I just shared and Phase 3 and Phase 4, we would have enough flexibility to move seamlessly through the process if we were found out to be in need of a closure or in need of reverting back to another phase or forward to a phase. By having the five, and you'll see as this is all mapped out, there's a lot of flexibility allowed for the system. Additionally, I will also add that part of our process, and I'll use the example of Smokey the Bear. So, if you travel through a park or through a trail, you see that Smokey the Bear, like, level of fire. And what we're hoping to develop is a dashboard of sorts, so that we know at some level kind of where we're headed or where we are, based on the modeling provided by CDC as well as the health departments. Randy, can you go to 3 for me? Okay, Phase 3, sorry about that, I was a little slow there. Phase 3, we obviously continue to see the ease of restrictions. We have larger portions of the student population being allowed to return to school. We have to have strict social distancing, but students are able to participate in-person instruction as well as in a blended model. I think one of the things that's very important to share here is that the determining factors around the number of students that can participate is expansive, right? So, we originally think about things like square footage, what does the health department share, but it also has to incorporate, what's the bandwidth for our staff? What's the bandwidth for our custodial staff, teachers, principals? So that we're making sure, and our families, so that we're making sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students in the most appropriate way. And then, the other piece is that we're really looking at providing opportunities for both in-person instruction and remote learning, so that the student that is in-person is not in a different location or in a different opportunity than the students that are in the blended model. So, that has to have a lot of simultaneous learning and a lot of possibilities for videotaping and asynchronous learning through that process. And then, Phase 4, which is, again, you can see that every step of the way, we're relaxing what those social distancing restrictions look like and that most, the majority of our students will return. We've determined having flexible environments for families that are still, may not be comfortable or have families that are immunocompromised. We want to make sure that we have those systems in place so that students know BVSD has a plethora of opportunities for our students and we want to make sure that they're accessing their education at the level of their need and comfort, based on where we are in the current crisis. And then, Phase 5 would be returning to completely normal operations, where all students are returning for in-person instruction and that students that want to continue remote learning, for whatever the reason, would be able to access full-time Boulder Universal, as we have in existence for a number of years. So, those are the phases for the work that we're doing. Again, super defined at the level that we can right now, as much as possible in the letter and in the communication that we've shared. And then, what I would share is that the last component is really around our next steps for our introduction of what we're looking at. So, the first piece is to make sure that we're connecting with community partners. So, as an example, we have a recovery task force. It's really difficult to think about all of the players that need to be included in all of these conversations and making sure that we're honoring the incredible work. So, we've started to develop a large-scale task force that will be the, kind of, the feedback loop. And there actually will be a number of groups that will be within that group that help us, based on the parameters and rules that we have developed the next step. We've started a scenario development, so looking at those components specifically related to how many students can you have? Thank you, Randy. How many students can you have in a space? What does it look like in our classroom buildings with the average square footage? What are we doing around transportation? And what are the sanitation options? You know, one student to a bathroom, groups of students, masks, no masks? So, I can share that in the last couple of hours, we started listing all of the parameters that we needed to think about in instruction, facilities, operations, technology, HR, and there are well into the hundreds of considerations that we need to take. I would say that, please, 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 we'll have a Let's Talk education on BV22, Thursday, May 14th, at 8:00 a.m., and we will provide updated information. And the last thing I will share is, on the last slide, there is a draft of a really incredible website landing page that we will be launching that is called COVID-19 reintroduction. And it will, as we do, it will share the phases and it will share updated information and we will communicate out information that will be loaded here so that families and community know exactly what's happening to the level that we can provide information. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay, I'll just go alphabetically and I'll start with Richard.
Great work, Margaret and team. It seems to me like you put a lot of thought behind it. The question that I have, and I know it's hard to predict, but is there, are you thinking about, have you thought about time, a timeline as it relates to the different phases?
Yes, so two levels of timeline. One, I don't want to exclude Rob Price, who's co-leading this opportunity with me, which is exactly what it is, an opportunity. And I will share that in terms of timeline, there are a number of factors. So, to begin with, we have a backward design model, where we're saying we want all of this information available by certain deadlines as to the level that we can, which really is going to be around the specificity of each phase built out, knowing that it really will depend on the next peak or lack thereof, that will define how we open. And then, we're hoping to continue to update families over the summer, as well as the community in general, around what school will look like. And then, knowing that at any time, and I say any time, we will notice whatever the trend may be and work with our community partners to determine when is the best time to make that transition. We're trying to be really cognizant of not switching from day to day, you know, like from we're in one phase to the next day, we're in another phase, and trying to provide some runway for that opportunity so parents can plan accordingly for their children. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, Kathy?
Great work. I just have a couple of quick questions. This re-entry plan applies uniformly across all grade levels?
So, our goal would be that priority outside of Phase 2, so going into Phase 3, we're developing what that might look like. Do we prioritize elementary school students? Because many of our older students may be able to have less one-on-one. Do we prioritize what that looks like for high schools? So, those are all determining factors on the table, because we want to make sure we're hitting the largest number of student population without minimizing the importance of keeping the social distancing. So, it's kind of a balance that we're always working with, trying to keep in the forefront that we want to connect with all kids.
So, we don't know yet? You're just, it's a work in progress?
Yes. For Dan.
And is there, I know this is kind of like Richard's question, but is there like a go-no-go date in like in August or something, where we will tell parents, this is what we're going to do for a certain period of time? Or are we expecting everyone just to be flexible all the way through?
So, a little bit of both. We are hoping that people will be flexible. A lot of it will be determined in the next six weeks or so, as we see what happens with the pandemic. When we meet, I mean, essentially, we meet daily. Not me personally, but part members of the team meet daily with the health departments throughout the area. So, just, and we have a number of partners that are, you know, local superintendents in areas that connect almost every other day. So, we think that we'll have some window so that parents know with enough time to make decisions or to plan.
And none of this impacts summer school, because that's already been said?
Yes, that would be Robin Fernandez.
Okay.
Any question about summer learning, it's all her.
Thanks, Margaret. Okay, nothing else? Thanks, Tina.
All right, Donna?
You're muted. I'm new. Can you hear me? Okay. Actually, my comments are, we don't know what we don't know. So, I'm still waiting for the data and the facts, as you guys are too, because it can change tomorrow, for the better or for the worse, for what parents want. I know that my grandson's little preschool opened with limiting their group to only five, because parents are working. And so, there's just so many unknowns that, at this point, I'll just sit and be patient, because you guys are doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, I don't have questions. I just want to say, good job. I know how hard you all are working and I'm always impressed with how well you're doing and what you're doing for our kids. So, thank you.
Lisa?
Thanks. I, yes, first of all, it looks fantastic and thanks for all the work. I wanted to come back to something you said about one-on-one, that the last two weeks in my house have been hard. It's been a really tough time and I think the novelty has really worn off and kids are just, they're not feeling it. And I have probably heard, some have spoken to four dozen families and teachers at elementary school kids in the last two weeks. And there's a few that are still doing great, but I think 90% are having this experience of it just being a struggle. And what I'm hearing across the board from parents and teachers and students alike is that that need for small groups and for one-on-one and for having that teacher connection where they're freed up from all of the online lesson planning and can help the kids actually learn the material. So, I'm wondering, when we're looking at the possibility of remote learning and blended learning, do we have plans in place to have lesson planning done in some way that takes some of the time onus off of the teachers to do all of that behind-the-scenes work and frees them up to have more of those interactions in person with the kids? Especially if we're able to bring the, in that exhibit tier 2, where we have the kids who can't access materials back in the classroom and then that lets us sort of have those interactions with less of an equity concern for the rest of our students?
I think that's actually a great point. And as we're planning moving forward, certainly aligned to our strategic plan, those unit plans and templates that we will be rolling out will be very helpful for teachers, because obviously, our goal is to minimize their level of stress and impact so that they can more easily meet the needs of their students in their classroom. And I do think that we want to honor the level of autonomy that teachers have based on program or school, so that the students' experiences are unique for their grade level or school. So, I think it's a fine balance and taking that into account that we, you know, and a lot of it is also the fact that we're headed into summer vacation anyway and that timeline is exacerbated by the fact that we're home. I mean, I would totally agree with you, being a mom, I'm like, so done. I'm like, oh, you want to go play basketball? Have a good time. You can learn math later. So, I definitely agree with keeping that in mind as we're moving forward and trying to find a way to ease that pressure and at the same time, give kids and teachers the opportunity to interact together as much as possible. So, we'll be moving forward with that in mind and hopefully, it meets the needs of everyone and we'll monitor and adjust as we need to going through the process.
Stacy?
Thank you for that. I think it's going to be well-received when families get it. Just one comment that, and I've mentioned this before, just like the song says, the waiting is the hardest part. So, the quicker or the soonest that you can possibly make a decision in the summer will go a long way with the families. I know that the hardest part is not knowing and I know that flexibility is needed at this time, but I also think that it would be really difficult to not have any idea what's going to happen until, let's say, August 5th. You know? So, I just wanted to put that out there. But thank you for this. I think it's great.
Okay. Yeah, and thank you. It seems great. I echo what Lisa said. I am a parent and we're done with distance learning. And so, and we're really looking forward to Phase 5 in my family. So, that's that. Okay, Rob, you had another?
Yes, I do. And just to close, thank you, Margaret. Thank you to the team. The complexity of the logistics on pulling this off, I just don't want to gloss over the extent that our team has done already, so much deep thinking and partnership. And so, congratulations to the team. We don't have all the answers yet. As soon as we do, then folks will know. Stacy, and I think everybody agrees, the quicker we can understand exactly what's going to happen, the happier that's going to make people, unless we make a call too early and miss out on an opportunity to provide in-person instruction for students. If you were to ask me, Rob, what's the plan for August? I would have to tell you, stay online, because we just don't have the information that would allow us to move forward. So, we're going to try to balance, you know, these are committees. We'll be in touch with our community. Within the letter, there is going to be a survey that we'll be sending home, quick, one-minute survey. And I encourage parents to fill that out for us, to give us some feedback on how things are going, help us make determinations on what we plan for next year. I think that that will be incredibly helpful. And then, you know, that we need to, as we move forward, this is really lining up very well with our strategic plan and the work that we've been doing all year around prioritization of standards and selecting an instructional model that then we can help support and train our teachers with. Because by using those two tools and work that we were already doing this summer to do that, we intend on building out actual units for teachers to implement and use. Lisa, to your point, teachers will find many more resources that will be at their fingertips. We'll start the year with training where we're at. So, in the event that there is, continues some portion of online, I think that we'll be much better prepared for that. And our team will be ready to fast-forward, in many ways, some of the strategic plan work to ensure a level of consistency. And one of the things that I've heard from parents that I've had a chance to chat with is, on one hand, one of my kids, their teacher's checking in with them two, three times a week. And on the other hand, teachers have only checked in with my kid, you know, once every few weeks. And so, setting some standards and expectations around what does that look like? And then, working with the planning to help kind of take some of that burden off, teachers, I think are going to be great improvements as we move forward. And again, just can't say enough good things about our team and making this work. So, the second topic, there was some news that came out today in regards to state budget. We've got Bill on the line. I will tell you that the news that districts across the state received is not great. And I think that it is something that all of the districts across Colorado are going to struggle to deal with in regards to what our state budget outlook is looking like, based on the latest economic forecast. And so, I want to ask Bill to share a little bit on what that is and then talk to you all about next steps on how we're going to use this information and integrate it into our budget process. And so, I'll turn this presentation over to Bill. Donna, you have a question before we start?
I do. I just have a quick comment. On, I did like that Governor Polis is rolling out on PBS, the literacy channel for those K through 3, those in our system that are falling behind. And I know that my daughter-in-law in Adams 12 works with one of the gals that's going to help in producing that. So, I was real excited to see that we are getting some help, though it's remotely still and parents are, you know, it's like, well, I don't necessarily need remote. But for those kids struggling and falling behind, I really think that this is going to be beneficial.
Thanks, Donna, for sharing. Okay, Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Rob. So, it was confirmed today, the state's chief economist, Kate Watkins, the reporting that's been out there for the last couple of weeks, really, of the magnitude of the shortfall that the state legislature is going to be wrestling with on a very shortened timeline. So, you know, normally, we would be a week past the end of the legislative session by this date. And the legislature would have been talking all of April about the budget. So, they've been on hold for a long time. So, the update confirmed the $3.3 billion shortfall number that has been reported, again, the last couple of weeks. This is a combination of the current year shortfall. So, there's a shortfall in the revenue from what was appropriated in the 1920 year of about $900 million. And then, another $2.4 billion for the 2020-21 fiscal year. So, it's kind of a combination of two numbers where that large number comes up with. So, there's certainly been reporting of freezing expenditures the governor's done, to the extent possible. I think the state has about as much flexibility as we have when it comes to freezing spending this late in the game of the fiscal year. So, the goal, I think, is to avoid recisions as much as possible in the current year, although that is still a possibility. I haven't heard any reporting that that's being looked at, but certainly, when it comes to the state not being able to spend in a deficit manner, they're pulling out all the stops, but you know, if push comes to shove, they will have to have some rescission out to K-12. The decline that's looked at is over two years. So, it's a drop in the current year and a drop in the next year. It's about an 18% drop in revenue over those two years. And both of the last recessions in 2001 to 2003-ish, in 2008 to 2011, those were both about 17% peak to trough across those two as well. So, again, this is of a similar magnitude, at least from what's being projected, larger dollar amounts, but as a percentage, similar. So, it's a lot of projection at this point as to what the impact on K-12 in general and specifically Boulder Valley will be. To walk through sort of a through-line of thinking, if K-12 is about 36%-ish of state spending, 36% of that $3.3 billion is just under $1.2 billion, which is about a 16, 16.5% reduction to K-12. That's pushing $42 million cut to Boulder Valley, if it were to be at that extent. There's been discussion of a number looking like 15%, which obviously is a little bit less. It's a little north of $38 million for Boulder. And then, to sort of chip away in 5% increments, each 5% is about $375-ish million for the state and about $12.8 million for Boulder Valley. So, again, the magnitude of this is significant. It is all of the peak of the negative factor from 2012, 2013. That was about $1.1 billion, just under $1 billion. So, this is all of that and more, potentially, and all at once. That peak from the prior recession was over about four years to get there. That peak from the prior recession was over about four years to get there. So this is significant. There's discussion of base funding, right? So how do we, how much can the state actually cut before we get to the base? That's a little bit open to interpretation. There's some, it's a pretty straightforward calculation. What is the student count times what is the base funding number? That's a little bit north of $7,000 per student. But it will affect districts very differently, depending on the really small districts that have significant size factor funding will be affected the most by far. There's districts that have, you know, $12,000, $14,000 in per pupil revenue because of the size factor. So once the big districts, if the cut goes that far, once the big districts hit the base, because they don't have as far to go, then the smaller districts will really start kicking in quickly. The JBC is going to continue their budget balancing conversation this week, and they're pushed out their timeline to get back together with the full legislature until after Memorial Day on the 26th. So I think we'll have a much better idea when the long bill comes out. They're working on getting that done, I think, Thursday, or getting close. So we'll know more in the next couple of days. But to say the least, this is pretty significant. And depending on whether another round of federal stimulus funding that can help states is passed, that'll be another factor in there, but I don't think that'll happen in too quick a manner. So I'll leave it there and answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Bill, for that. Richard, do you have any questions?
Not at the moment, Tina. Thank you.
Kathy?
So, Bill, when you say it's the same peak to trough that we had during the Great Recession, we were at least starting without a negative factor then. So for school districts, it's much more dramatic than it is for the state. Is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. I mean, we're already behind $572 million in funding, and this would potentially be another billion-plus on top of that, as opposed to the last round of cuts. That peak to trough was just the state's total revenue at that period of time. So definitely more impactful for school districts at this point in time, because that level of funding is already reduced from Amendment 23, in theory, levels.
Maybe more than even other parts of the state budget, because we're running such a deficit from the recession. Is that fair? I mean, highways might try to differ, but they aren't running that kind of deficit.
That's true. No other part of the state, except maybe the healthcare portion, has the requirements of inflation and growth quite like we do in Amendment 23, although the negative factor is certainly the wild card in that. So there hasn't, there hasn't been a tracking of the impacts to other areas of the state budget quite like there has been with K-12, which is why, when it was put in place oh so long ago, we were really pushing for that to make sure that we didn't lose sight of what the funding levels should be.
And you talked about getting to the base. For Boulder, it'll be a while, because there's some big districts ahead of us. But one of the factors is at-risk funding, which is how we get our money for our students who live in poverty. So can you talk a little about what would happen if we lost our at-risk funding?
So, bring my screen back up. I mean, essentially, the total amount of funding that we get in the School Finance Act is, currently, it's about $255 million through the School Finance Act alone. And that's after the $19 million reduction from the negative factor in the current year. So, again, the way the formula works, at-risk funding is somewhat outside of the total amount, but then gets added into the total and divided by the total number of pupils to come up with the average per pupil revenue. So it's kind of a nuance of just how the School Finance Act works. But suffice it to say that it is one of the factors that is considered, and getting to base funding means that that at-risk funding is gone, as well as all of the personnel cost factors and size factors for the really small districts. I mean, this will, this will potentially bankrupt districts, because you don't go from operating at $14,000 to $7,000 per student and continue to keep the doors open. That's just going to be a significant impact.
Just one last quick question. How much do we get in factor funding from the state, roughly? All in with at-risk and cost of living?
Boulder?
Mm-hmm.
Um...
Just roughly?
I think it's about $1,500 a student.
Okay. A lot.
Yeah.
So you're just going to, so we're going to start running scenarios at 15% and maybe 20%? Is that what it sounds like? Or just 15 and hope we never have to think 20?
I think at 20% is more than all of the factors can handle, so it can't go that high.
Okay.
It's, again, this idea of what is base funding, right? So the full-day kindergarten funding, that's $200, $220 million, is part of base funding in that there are student counts, and you multiply those by the, they're included and run through the system. But the legislature could make the choice to take away full-day kindergarten funding, which would take $200, $220 million out of the system. That's not technically part of the base. It's, this is, I'm kind of talking around in circles, because it's a little hard to follow the through-line on it, but it will count as part of base funding in one scenario, but could be reduced in another. So, really, it depends on how the legislature will decide to make those reductions, whether they go the route of across-the-board percent reduction, where some districts will hit the base, because they're already pretty close at the statewide average. Or will they go the route of program removal? I mean, in theory, they could eliminate the preschool program as another sort of similar component of, it's per pupil funding, but it's not overall required in the same way that first through 12th grade is.
Seems like you can't get enough program cuts to get up to $1 billion in cuts.
Yeah.
But for Boulder, best-case scenario is we'll know beginning of June, I hope, unless the legislature kicks it farther down the road, what the actual budget cuts are they're looking for, and so we'll have to have community engagement and all of that in June at the earliest, I think, right?
So we'll have a, we'll have a better idea before that, just because of the process that the legislature will have to go to. When they're coming back together at, right after Memorial Day, they'll have a pretty good idea of what the long bill is. They won't have a whole lot to argue over. The number is what the number is. It's not like, should we spend more on this or more on that? Because that would just be less on something else. So I think we'll have a pretty good idea when we have our next official budget discussion on that Tuesday after Memorial Day.
And then, one question, maybe this needs to go, Tina, better agenda setting or whatever, but if there's ways that the board could be advocating for more equitable ways to take the cuts? I don't need you to answer that now, but to think about, if there's things we should be trying to talk to our legislators about, how to take these cuts so they don't hit the most impacted students by the virus, who are being doubly impacted by, you know, what they're already having to struggle through, and then they get hit with the virus. And so, if there are things we could be advocating that are better ways to take the cuts than others, if you could think about that, and maybe we could have that conversation at a later date.
Okay. We might want to pose that question to Ernestine also, who'll be joining.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Next is Donna.
I don't have too much to say, except for, as I looked over the Policy Matters and looked at, you know, it's scary reading on the line items and the, if deeper cuts are required in decision items, I realize it's all TBD again, and May 26th will bring us a little more answers that, you know, it's just, to read through that list and see additional deep-cut options and all of the things that will impact us, you can, I guess, sit on anxiety or just wait, and we'll see what happens, and I'll wait to hear from you, Bill, on the update. Thanks.
Kitty?
Yes. A couple of questions. What would we do if the state decided not to fund full-day K?
It would then be a choice as to whether the district continued to offer it as it is in place this year, or eliminate it, or move to a tuition-based model. I mean, that's kind of the range of options that exist.
But I would, I would say this, Bill and Kitty, I think that it's really dangerous for us to begin to speculate without having the information. You know, the idea of not providing full-day K after we waited for so long, you know, is, but in full transparency, we're not going to have great choices when we have to make cuts this deep. I just need to prepare everyone to know and understand that, and that we're going to be honest, we'll be transparent, and we'll bring forth the best thinking that we have. But, you know, at this point, we got this information today. I think that it's better to let the information come to us and then make decisions based on what we know, because, again, that would be, I mean, there's a lot of things they could do that would be really painful, and then we'll just have to react and do the best we can with that information. But I think it's probably better, we're better served to not start to kind of, you know, go down what-if scenario, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, is that it, Kitty? Okay. Lisa?
I feel like we've gotten a lot of really great communication from all kinds of sources, from Rob and from School Finance Project and Bill, and so many different kinds of information are coming in that I'm maybe suffering a little bit from information overload at this point. And I'm wondering whether we have in the books, or if we could consider talking about an opportunity to have a study session to draw more clearly some of the lines about different scenarios for cost-cutting and what that could look like at the state level and what it could look like at the district level, to help narrow down some of this information and make it feel a little bit more concrete and a little bit less like math problems, if that makes sense.
I would say that it depends on when we get the information. Right? Like, I think that once we get the information, once we know that we have that, I think that's a conversation. Tina, I didn't mean to cut you off, but...
Oh, it's fine. I think, I mean, that's our new budget process, so that's what we'll be doing at our next budget work sessions, meetings, presumably, is trying to figure that out. Is that accurate, Bill and Rob?
Yeah, I mean, our next presentation, we have the scheduled work session that is more of the, at least historically, has been the public input on the budget, and then the formal presentation and discussion at the board meeting of the proposed budget.
Yeah. And we can add in whatever we need, just depending on what the timing is. So we may need to add additional work sessions and have other conversations, and we may need to move community input if it gets moved back. So, Lisa, do you have other questions?
No, I didn't think so. I mean, I, like I said, I think the communication has been great. It may be partially by virtue of just newness, but the district is just so large, and there's so many different places that our money goes when we talk about these cuts. I'm not always sure that I understand the direct connections to where cuts would happen or, you know, sort of how things would work. But if we're going to be addressing those in the near future at least, I think that's, that's fine.
Stacy? Okay. Yeah, I'll just make a comment. I got to listen to part of the JBC conversations, I think, on either Wednesday or Thursday, when they were talking about the cut proposals, and this particular segment was on health services that were being cut. And some of the members were crying, because these cuts are going to be so impactful to the most at-risk people in our state, and we all know it. So it's awful, and it's going to be, it's very painful, and there'll be people experiencing cuts, not only in their experience in BBSD, but in their, in their healthcare and other avenues. So I think it's, it's going to be very tough for people, and I hope that we can all keep everyone in mind as people have to deal with these new realities. So that's it. Rob?
Well, just thank you, Bill. Thank you, everyone. As we get information, we will be sharing that with you all, and then, just like everything during this time, you know, we want to hurry up and know and understand, right? And so, you know, we've been, you know, I've got all the confidence in the world in Bill and my grados and the rest of our team as we, as we think about, you know, cuts in the tens of millions of dollars. It's good to know that we have a great team that can help guide us through, a team that's been through this before. And I know that you all know that Bill was here during our last, the recession, and Mike was a key, key member of the same brain team when they went through their big financial crisis. So we have a really good team to help guide us through this. And that's all I have for my comments.
Okay. So with that, I would like to move to public participation. We have four speakers signed up in our new format, which is that they signed up prior to noon today, and then they are given a place in our Zoom waiting room. And as usual, we just ask that you can find your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. We also ask you to limit your presentation to two minutes, and recognize that students often attend or view our meetings, and therefore, please make your comments suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. And so, I believe you will see a yellow card from Laura when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then an orange card at 10 seconds. We'll see how this goes. Oh, it's pink. Okay. Pink at 10 seconds, yellow at 30 seconds. Fantastic. Thank you. So with that, we'll welcome our first speaker, Katie Purnan.
Hello. Mic check. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you to the Boulder Valley District School Board. I'm happy to speak today. I am the mother of a kindergartner who goes to Crestview. I also have a four-year-old who will be entering the BBSD school district in 2022. Home learning is a struggle in my household, and I've already heard several board members speak to this. We are lucky to be in a household where we have two income earners. Both of us are employed for now. Both of us are native English speakers, and our household has steady, reliable internet access. We have devices on hand to assist our children in connecting to their classes. And all I can think about is how BBSD families who are experiencing things differently from me are faring. And so, thank you to Board Member Gephardt for talking about this issue. And so thank you to Board Member Gephardt for talking about this issue. I attended BVSD's racial equity session a few months back, feels like forever, before everything shut down. And I was heartened by that discussion, how we talked about how we were going to talk about, how we were going to implement a curriculum that addressed marginalized populations and groups. And I want to make sure that we continue to push ahead with racial equity during this crisis. As a member of the Boulder NAACP branch, I am talking to you today because I know that they're concerned about that and I share my firm belief that it's essential that the board considers that. So I want us to be proactive in reducing disproportionate discipline for students of color when in-person learning comes again. I want us to create clear guidelines for procedures regarding bullying, especially regard, with regard to racism, ensuring a full compliance with federal and state laws and prioritizing anti-racist programs, trainings, and directives. That went really fast. But thank you. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Christine Johnson. Sorry about that.
All right, can you hear me? Yes, all right. Thank you for working so hard to get the pandemic effort right and to take time to reflect. The pandemic and economic fallout have exacerbated pre-existing inequities. I will continue to urge you to prioritize students of color, students in poverty, students learning English, and students with learning challenges. In examining the impact of distance learning, I encourage you to be real. Be real about what engagement means and looks like and how you track it. Be real about the percentage of students who are falling through the cracks. If the majority of your students seem fine, put more energy into those who are not. There is disproportionality in the problems that we're facing. I would love to see the development of ideas for how we can better reach all families, starting by asking those most impacted and the students who are struggling the most and the staff who most closely work with them. Think about how equity fits into this and think about what other tools these people need. The advantage to looking at the coming school year versus now is that we can take a deep breath and plan and reflect. What worked and what didn't? Why? For whom? What needs to change? What needs to continue? Just as in-person schooling requires differentiation to reach all students, there is no one-size-fits-all with distance learning. Many, many of our students and families are experiencing deep trauma. Our interactions with and supportive students should be informed by that. Maybe you want to think of a new class which is focused on social and emotional health and technical and executive function skills, all vital to surviving the next few years and navigating new ways of schooling. Now, more than ever, all instruction must be universally accessible and differentiated and culturally and linguistically informed. I am a member of the NAACP Boulder County Branch, and thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Tiffany Boyd.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay, great. Hi, good evening. My name is Tiffany Boyd and I taught in Boulder Valley School District for 27 years. I just retired in May of 2019. I am also a parent of two BVSD students who attend Boulder High. I would like to begin by thanking the school board, administrators, and the extraordinary efforts of the teachers in our district on how quickly they adapted to online learning and to providing food to our district's families. As we move forward into the fall, there are still many unknowns about how we will safely conduct the business of teaching and learning with our K-12 students. I recognize that this is our primary and most daunting task with the new financial constraints that our district and state are facing. Indeed, this will require our best thinking and innovation. But tonight, I would also like to direct your attention to the importance of what we teach our students in the fall and moving forward, not just in response to this pandemic, but the essential skills that K-12 students will need to prepare them for their goal as global citizens of our planet. In April, I sent a letter to the school board with three other community members, which stated that in the midst of this COVID emergency, we believe that providing our young people with the tools they need to envision and create a sustainable world is an urgent undertaking. As environmental trends continue to overwhelm us, we need to ask similar questions relative to empowering young people with the skills they will need to live and conduct business that operate in synchrony with Earth's living systems. The good news is that BVSD already has a sustainability management system with an outline that prioritizes many operational practices connected with sustainability in our district. However, the integration of sustainability as an essential component of our K-12 curriculum needs the urgent focus of our district in support, in order to support the teachers with an integrated K-12 coordinated approach to this learning. As an educator, I know this is a huge.
Okay. Okay, so, and I don't know if we need to do as an abrupt cutoff at the two minutes. Our next speaker is Martin Ogle. Sorry about that.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Hello, my name is Martin Ogle. I'm a parent of sixth-grade twins at BVSD. Our family moved to Colorado exactly eight years ago, and I founded an LLC called Entrepreneurial Earth after a 27-year career as head naturalist for the Northern Virginia Regional Parks. I will second pretty much everything that Tiffany Boyd has just stated, that we need to make environmental principles and knowledge a much bigger part of our students' curriculum and essentials of education. And to go beyond that, we need to empower young people with a solid sense of how they can contribute to the creation of a sustainable economy, no matter what their skills or aptitudes and therefore career directions. We need to make explicit the connections between environmental knowledge and all careers that they might consider. During this COVID crisis, many have asked, why didn't we see this coming? And couldn't we have done something about it? And I wonder, will we be asking ourselves the same questions when other trends of human environment imbalance overtake us? I hope not and think that this disrupted time is the perfect time to start envisioning and taking steps towards a new normal. So I asked the school board to make environmental principles and sustainability literacy the highest priority, along with their direct connection to our students' concept of and training for their own careers. I'll be sending you information shortly on a webinar through the city of Lewisville later this month, it'll take place later this month, about the all-careers approach. I hope you can join us and pass on the word. Tiffany and I are ready and able to engage you with resources and help on other, on, on these thoughts that we've spoken about, especially some that can be put into place right now. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes public participation and we'll move on to board communication. And can we start with Richard?
Thank you, Tina. I want to thank the speakers that spoke this evening. And also to let the board know that I did meet with the NAACP. I believe it was last week. And a lot of the issues that they brought forward tonight, they brought forward when I spoke with them. And as you all know, and I believe the committee knows, that making sure that the most underserved students in our district is and has been my priority, sitting on the school board. And I'm a little bit in shock right now after hearing the potential budget cuts and what we're going to be doing as we're moving forward. But I really, really hope that we keep in front of our minds here that we do have a lot of kids that were behind, are behind, and probably got further behind because of COVID. And that we need to do whatever we can to make sure that those particular kids get as much of a hands-up as we can provide them as relates to their own education. And then the support the families need to, to be able to support their children, especially when we're going through all these different phases. I know it's been particularly hard in the East End, and I know in all of the other districts of the school district, it's, it's had its effect, especially with our families that are low-income, have been laid off, that don't have access to computers or the internet. And even if they do have Chromebooks that are brought home from school, many don't know how to operate it. And so that's, that's a big concern that I have. And I'm sure that, that with careful thinking, that we may still be able to continue providing services for those particular children at a much more elevated basis, probably because of COVID. So looking forward and not looking forward to the whole budget discussion as we're moving into the future here, because it's going to be tough. But we can't leave these kids behind. And I know, and I know that we all know that. And I'm hoping that with the creative minds of the school district and, and our staff, that we'll be able to figure it out. And I know that in the presentation that Dr. Crespo made, that there was some special considerations that were going to be placed, that were going to be put in place as it related to children that need the most service as it related to the, the blended learning, whether it be in-person learning and also remote learning. So I'm happy to have heard that and I'm thinking that's probably what she was meaning. I didn't ask the question, but, but I'm thinking that the kids that need the most help probably will probably be receiving some in-person learning, I'm hoping. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you, Richard. I don't have a whole lot to add to that. I have just a couple of quick things. Last week, the Local Accountability Metrics Stakeholder Group held its second meeting. We considered what measures we should prioritize for local accountability in addition to those already identified for the CU cadre to research. While being cognizant of the risk of identifying more measures that schools can use in planning, we settled on two for additional consideration, being on track to advancement in mathematics at fifth, eighth, and 11th grades and receiving a literacy intervention. We also talked about how to use existing groups to get some feedback on metrics we intend to recommend. We're scheduled to reconvene next week to review examples of other districts using metrics around student perceptions of supportive relationships with adults and students having access to learning opportunities that occur outside the school day. Also had a meeting with some of the leaders of El Paso, and I look forward to continuing to work with them to hear their concerns as we kind of navigate our way through this. And I look forward to trying to figure out how we can advocate so that these cuts that I know we're going to face, and the numbers are somewhat startling, how we make that have the least impact as possible on some of our, our more struggling communities. Thanks.
Donna, any comments?
Just a few. I, I am, I've talked with teachers over the past week and they, they too have the concern that our, let me turn on my video. Hold on here. They too have the concern that our struggling learners need that in-person contact. And I, I hope that we, as a district, can also coordinate with the things. A, a good example is at Boulder High, we have Adelante, we have I Have a Dream, we have ozone, Avid, and Panther Pride, that's all working hard to help our struggling learners. And having spent my whole career and lifetime in, as a reading specialist, and then just working with ESL students, knowing that those struggling readers need that in-person contact and so do their parents, to, to help them learn the system and guide the system. Like I said earlier, I was glad to hear that Governor Polis is initiating, for those parents that don't have internet, they can tune, tune into the PBS TV channel and, and get some of the latest literacy guidelines and, and lesson plans for those really young readers, K through three. But, but I know that we've got a lot to do and a lot to prepare for to help those struggling learners. And just thank you to the speakers that came forward to remind us of that. And I, I know we haven't forgotten it. Thank you.
Kitty, any comments?
Yes, I think I'm going to end up reiterating what a lot of people said. But I, I do want to thank not only the speakers, but everyone who emailed us this week with concerns about the kids who are struggling, the kids who have fewer resources and urging us to do our best to support them. And that's something I've been concerned about. And I'm sure we will be having them at the top of our minds as we're making our painful decisions about what to do with our budget. And yeah, that was it. So, thanks.
Okay, Lisa?
I was talking this week with one of the folks on our Latino Parent Council, and she said something that I wanted to take a minute to highlight. She was asking whether when we're doing our equity outreach efforts, we're remembering to start with the question, how can we help? And I thought it was important to bring that and underscore it. I know that's the cornerstone of the work we do at Mother House, and I imagine that Richard does at El Paso, and that a lot of social work is, is directly focused on is not just showing up at the door with a menu of options and a list of all the different things that we can do, but turning that question around instead and making sure that as we're moving forward with every stage of this process, our equity focus is starting with how can we help? Or if you need, what are you missing? What would make a difference? What can we do? How can we help? And that that's the focus of, of the work we're doing. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy?
I'll just echo my thanks to everyone who spoke, but everything's been said already, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, great. And I have very little to add. I think we've been prioritizing struggling learners for a long time. And that was the recommendation from the District Accountability Committee. It's consistent with the board's direction. So as we embark on this process of cuts, I would imagine will be in agreement that we need to continue to support our most at-risk kids. So with that, I would like to move on to the next item, which is the legislative update, and take a break afterward because Ernestine's been on the phone waiting for a long time. Is everyone okay with that? Okay, great. So Ernestine is one of our lobbyists, and she's here to give us an update. We're taking advantage of the virtual platform and getting her, getting her to come talk to us directly.
Thanks, Tina, and thanks for having me here today. I thought I'd just present a little overview of the budget balancing decisions that the JBC has made to date and sort of an outlook of what's to come. And feel free to chime in with questions at any time. So the big buzz around the Capitol today, as Bill mentioned before, is that the revenue shortfall of 3.3 billion was shored up as we had been expecting. I think this put a really somber mood because some of the other things that have happened as a result of the pandemic are also going to sort of compound this shortfall in the out years. We know that income tax collections are down, but we don't fully know the impacts of those. They're expecting 121 million decrease for 1920 and 135 million in 2021. Also, the State Education Fund is going to receive lower collections. They think it's going to be about 51 million in 1920 and 143 million in 2021. And as you know, the State Education Fund helps pay for school finance and many of the programs in CDE. So I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, on the forecast, because Bill has already talked a lot about this. But the only thing that we have to look forward to is that tomorrow, the Joint Budget Committee staff will provide the Joint Budget Committee with an overview of their actions to date and what the gap is between that 3.3 billion and what they've already balanced in budget. So they'll sort of find out what their gap is to finish balancing the budget, and that'll come tomorrow. And as soon as they get that number, they can sort of finish making all of those decisions that they've been laying over from the past week and make decisions on, you know, if they need to go deep. you know, if they need to go deeper than they already have. The other big highlight from today was that Joanne Graff, the state's property tax administrator, um, presented on the current economic situation with regards to property tax revenues. Um, and the big highlight here is that the residential assessment rate is expected to drop to 5.88%. Um, what this means for districts is that they'll see a drop in total program for $246 million and then local revenues will drop by $490 million. And what that means is that the general fund will have to pick up that shortfall from the loss in the residential assessment rate. Um, so that's also going to be a huge impact, although she did note that that won't be felt until the spring of 2022. So for the current budget year that they're currently balancing, this won't be impacted. Um, but will certainly have some out-year effects. Um, so I thought I'd skip along to the CDE budget balancing. We know we sent a report last week. Um, Craig Harper, the JBC staff did an excellent job of really trying to protect total program funding. Um, he reached out to all of the school districts, CASE, CASB, CEA, and everyone was sort of in agreement that total program funding needed to be protected among, among everything else. Um, including all of the grant programs that are currently out there. So his goal was for the budget committee to trim $72 million from the CDE budget um, in order to sort of revert that 72 million to pay for school finance. Um, school finance has not yet been determined. Craig needed today's revenue forecast numbers to make that recommendation and so that will come this week. Um, but they did trim really close to $72 million. And you know, Tina is absolutely right. They, there were a lot of tiers in this budget. Um, in the K-12 budget as well as human services and healthcare because these, these will certainly impact our most vulnerable and at-risk students. And so I think there is a lot of just disappointment and sadness, um, at the loss of a lot of these programs, um, that the JBC has had to cut. Um, so you know, unless there's questions on the list of those big-ticket items that they cut, I'll sort of move forward. I know we sent out a report last week. Um, but we know that to date, the JBC has only made about 700 million in reductions to the budget. Um, out of about 1.5 billion in proposed reductions. So that means they've laid over a lot of big-ticket items. Um, they've laid over the paradirect distribution payment um, recommendation to cut that, which is $225 million. Um, and like I said before, they've also laid over school finance until this week. Um, so as you can see, just with that estimated 700 million and the 3.3 billion-dollar gap that they have to fill, there's a lot of action that they'll need to take this week to sort of shore that up. Um, so yesterday, or I think Sunday night, legislative leadership has also announced that they are going to delay the budget by a week. Um, and won't come back into session until the week of May 25th. And this is to give additional time for the budget committee to, um, figure out the budget and then, you know, I think one of the biggest things that we're hearing from legislators is that they really want more, um, guidance from the feds on the money that has come down from the CARES Act as well as they're hoping that the, the feds, you know, push more money into the state that would give more flexibility and how they can spend that. And so I think they're hoping to get that in the next couple of weeks, but it's yet to be seen sort of what that will look like. Um, but I think legislators, there's certainly disagreement on what that reopening will look like. I think some want masks and social distancing and others do not. They want the process to be open to the public, don't want masks, et cetera. So it's yet to be seen what they're going to do there, but I think there's a lot of concern about what that will look like when they do reopen. And I'll just pause there for any questions.
Board members, any questions? Kathy?
Ernestine, thanks. The, the job you've been doing to keep us apprised of such a moving target has just been amazing. And so I really, really appreciate what you and Tanya are doing. Um, and I don't think it's going to get any easier over the next couple of weeks, but thank you for, for keeping us up to date. Um, so just a couple of quick questions. Um, is there's a, at least a draft bill to repeal Gallagher so that we don't experience that kind of dramatic drop in the assessment rate? Could you talk a little about that?
Sure. So we received an update from Senator Hanson today. Um, he is going to be the, one of the Senate sponsors. Um, I think he was really concerned. We talked to him after the forecast and he's really worried that that 5% residential assessment rate is going to crush the state with no backfill for K-12, which would mean more pain for higher education. And so he feels that this, he really needed to put the band together to sort of deal with this and he feels like this is the best bite of the apple that they're going to get to pass the, the repeal of Gallagher. So a couple just, um, process uh, things for the bill. So the bill is going to start in the Senate with Hanson and Senator Tate, who is from Centennial. They're going to be the prime sponsors. Senator Rankin and Bridges will likely sign on as co-sponsors upon introduction. And in the House, it's going to be Senator Esgar, who is the chair of the Joint Budget Committee and from Pueblo and another Republican, whoever they pick up in the House. Um, they need to get about five Republicans in the Senate. Um, and they, so they're working on that really, um, uh, diligently right now. Um, they got a decent path to 44 in the House, so they're feeling pretty good. And they think they have some Republican support there as well. Um, it sounds like all of the regional chambers are on board. There's lots of support from special districts, fire, um, fire folks in school districts and apparently the business community loves it. So that's all really great news because that's really, that will be really key to passing this, um, repeal. So what needs to happen in the bill is that they'll need to get two-thirds vote of the General Assembly. It will not require the governor's signature, although he is very supportive and Carrie Kennedy has been critical in the discussions on this. Um, it will go to the November ballot and it will only need 50% support because it's repealing an amendment that went in at 50%. And it will freeze the rates at where they are. So require a Tabor vote to change it. Um, and so that's kind of what they're proposing. I think Senator Hanson was certainly really fired up and excited about the support that they've been getting from this. So, um, I think it has a really good shot.
So one other quick question. Is there any shot at the emergency tax getting passed and um, and then referring another tax measure out to the, um, to the voters in November? Do you see, what, how do you handicap those?
Yeah. So with regards to the Tabor fiscal emergency, which is being proposed by Carol Hedges from the Fiscal Institute, I think we've been, been talking with just a few legislators. I think there's some concern that this is somewhat politically motivated, um, and it would put some folks on the record against schools. I think there's some concern that it's a bit premature because they want to see what federal money continues to come in and whether or not they have any flexibility over that. Um, there's concern about passing an emergency tax in November, given the current economic situation. And we haven't heard that there is a bill sponsor or a bill draft sort of out there, like the Gallagher bill. So right now it sounds like that one's still kind of up in the air, um, from what we've heard.
And then, um, per Tina's suggestion, we don't have to talk about this now, but as we go forward, if there's ways that as you start understanding where they're going to cut and how they're going to cut, if there's ways that we could help you um, with advocacy to try to take these cuts away from the populations that, that are going to need the support the most, we would love to hear from you about how we could support you in those advocacy um, efforts. So thank you.
Yeah. And thank you guys for just, you know, talking about that today because I think the joint budget committee and joint budget committee staff has been really committed to trying to find a path forward that would not hurt our at-risk students or at least, you know, not put as much pain on those areas. And so I think that is really important, but um, I do think that they really want to protect K-12 as much as possible, which is why they're delaying that decision um, sort of till the end. I also had just a few legislative proposals that we're hearing about. I'm sure many of you guys have heard about these as well. I can go over them or you can skip over. Um, I'll defer to Tina.
Uh, why don't we just go through them since you're here?
Okay. So, uh, I, I think this has been talked about extensively, the student count and a proposal that, um, would use the 2019 count with a home, a hold harmless provision if there is a declining district. Um, there's another alternative proposal that would make the March 20, make, that would have March 2020 be the, um, right before COVID hit. That would be the count date. Um, so I think there's discussions around count date and what that looks like. Um, CASE is looking at a two-year timeout on accountability standards. CASB is looking at teacher evaluations and doing those every two years as opposed to one. Um, I know the superintendents are talking about a Paris swap because they can't have furloughs. Um, and this could potentially take some of the burden off of that. Um, I know there's some talk about a bill to reduce the requirement of instructional time. Um, because there, there's not the ability to do the furlough days to, and so that would help them with balancing the budget or help school districts with balancing the budget. Um, and so those are some of the things that we've heard. Um, there's also this discussion around, um, public notice for, um, school district budgets. And we're still trying to figure out what that's going to look like now that they delayed the budget another week. Um, so we'll sort of have to keep you updated on those things. And if you guys have heard anything else, um, love to hear that as well.
Okay, um, Richard, any questions? Okay, uh, Donna, any questions?
No, I want to thank, oops.
You're muted. Unmute. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, I hit it twice. Um, I just want to thank Ernestine for the updates because I'm not an expert in this area and, and you are and you keep us in, in the know and I appreciate that because we depend on you to update us on what's happening. I do. I, I depend on you to update us and I read your emails that come through and I'm just thankful that, that we have you on board so that we know what's up and what to expect and I'm looking forward to May 26th. Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. I really appreciate that.
Kitty, anything?
I just want to dito what Donna just said. Thank you so much. Um, you and Tanya are doing a great job keeping up with a moving target and keeping us apprised. So thanks.
Stacy, any comments? Uh, Lisa? Okeydoke. Uh, well, thank you so much for coming and we look forward to hearing what else happens and do let us know if there's a place for us to insert our voice as we look to protect funding for our most at-risk kids.
Thank you and thank you so much for your engagement and for protecting our, our most at-risk, at-risk kids. Getting tongue-tied here. Have a good night.
Okay, you too. Um, board members, would you like a break now? For 10 minutes or shall we? Okay, yes, we're going to take a 10-minute break, which will bring us back around 7:40. Thanks for coming back to join us. Um, the next item on our agenda is action items and consent grouping. I'm going to read off the list of the items. 7.1 personnel items, 7.2 approval of minutes, April 28th, 2020 regular meeting. 7.3 2020, 2021 employee benefits. 7.4 acceptance of donation for Hill Elementary, 7.5 approval of a contract to design mechanical aid for boiler replacement at Eldorado PK through aid school. 7.6 approval of intergovernmental agreement to support GoPro grant to improve Sabre Marsh Environmental Education Center. 7.7 change order to the construction manager, general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at the Centaurus High School. 7.8 change order to the construction manager, general contractor contract to complete the IT department improvement project. 7.9 FY21 WonderWeb Chromebook purchase, 7.10 resolution 2017 to authorize bids in construction and maintenance projects. 7.11 grant special education school-to-work program, Colorado Division of Vocational Rehabilitation 20. Okay, so are there any items anyone would like to pull? Right, I'm just taking a moment. Donna, I can't see you, but there you are. Yeah, okay. And there's Lisa. Okeydoke. Um, can we get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda by Kitty? Do we have a second? Of, uh, by Stacy? Are, are there any questions or discussion about any of the items? Kathy?
I just have a quick question about the Chromebooks. Are those Chromebooks we had to buy because of deploying them because of the COVID? Are those Chromebooks, what, what are those going to be deployed for?
Um, those Chromebooks are part of the WonderWeb program. So every August, um, we have to pre-purchase the Chromebooks that the students will be coming in in grade six and nine at all of our secondary, except for Fairview and Boulder High.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, I'm looking, any other questions or comments about the items? Um, I just have a general question. We're approving the expenditures of bond monies. Um, are we ever going to get to a point where we have to think about either this, these types of projects or the ERP project in terms of delaying so that we can free up money? Or are we good on all this spending?
Not sure if Rob is on to answer in regards to bond. There are bills there. Bill, um, you want to take that?
Um, yeah, I mean, the bond money is, uh, very separate and very specific as to what it would be used for. Uh, so it really doesn't um, help when it comes to, uh, having a reduction in operating, uh, dollars. Um, we had very similar conversations and discussions. Was that the 2006 bond, I think, was some dollars left as we went into the, um, the Great Recession. Uh, so those dollars can't be used, uh, to backfill, um, operating funds. Um, then, oh, on the, the, uh, ERP project, um, you know, those are one-time funds, uh, the, the contract is approved and signed and so we're uh, moving forward with that. So, uh, I would think other projects that come up, we might, would, um, contemplate, but, uh, that's a, a project that has to be completed.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy?
So the, um, swap grant, is there any chance, Bill, that they'll pull that back or is that money that we're already um, in the bank, so to speak?
Uh, yeah, that one won't be pulled back. The ones that, uh, CDE is looking at reducing um, or were proposed for CDE, uh, to be reduced. Um, were more of the marijuana fund, uh, related ones, things like that.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Get part?
Yes.
Markwiss?
Yes.
Myers?
Sorry, yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Sweetie Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we'll now move to our next item, which are policy study items. All right. Okay. Um, just a quick question about the order. Did, did we want to do the DAC ones while the DAC people are on the phone first or is it too late to change that order?
I think you can probably change it, Kathleen.
Yeah, I agree. You can change that order.
Is everyone on the board okay with that just because our DAC representatives have sat here for so long? Donna, you have a nod there? Yes? Okay.
It works for me.
Okay. All right. Um, so Nicole and Ralph and, uh, oh, it's hard for me to tell exactly where everyone is. But if, do you want to start, um, so, so DAC has been spending a lot of time looking at the policies that are in our policies that govern the DAC and the SAC. So, um, I was hoping that Nicole and the DAC committee reps could walk us through the changes. And, and this is again on study, so this is the time to ask questions and we can still make changes if anyone's uncomfortable with what's been proposed. Nicole, do you want to take it away?
Sure, let me just get, um, my screen up. Well, first of all, while I'm getting this up, I wanted to say thank you for having us here tonight to present, President Markwiss, members of the board and district staff. These are clearly unprecedented times and I want to thank you guys for all the hard work you've been doing to get us through this. So, and maybe. The privacy settings are also not letting me share my screen. So while I start and try to get this going, so we had sent you a couple of weeks ago a packet with our recommendations and I hope you had the time to look through that. Tonight, our goal was to walk through why we are looking for some of these changes in policies, AER, what those policies are, and answer any questions that you might have. And unfortunately, if Kevin or Chris or John can share these slides, for some reason, my policy, my security settings are not allowing it. So while we work through that situation.
Wow, there we go.
Are we up?
Nicole, this is, this is Chris. Can you guys see that screen?
Yes. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so I guess I'll own the slide transitions then.
And so tonight, we have Chris Haynes, Kevin Riordan, and John Casby, who are members of the DAC Policy Subcommittee that are going to help with this presentation. So as I said, early on in the year, we discussed the board DAC taking a first pass at these revisions. And honestly, it was a lot bigger lift than I think any of us had expected, but we were definitely happy to take on the work. If you could turn to the next slide, Chris. So I want to lay a little bit of the foundation for what these existing BVSD policies currently cover and sort of what the work of the DAC and the SACs are. So Colorado State Statute mandates and minimally defines the existence and some requirements for school accountabilities committees and district accountability committees. And that state statute also gives a bit of leeway to local district school boards to provide input in what those accountability committees look like. So these accountability committees are collaborative thought partners that allow diverse perspectives and voices to be heard in systems accountability, both at the school level and at the district level. And in fact, state statute says that these committees should reflect the diversity of the schools and the district in which they represent. So it's a great opportunity for a lot of different people from the community, school staff, district staff, parents to be involved in discussions about schools. Additionally, the work of these committees tie really well into strategic plan, particularly Theme 3, which talks about collaborative partnerships with families, communities, and working on empowering and communicating with those individuals. So the work of the SACs and DAC's parlay is really nice there. And it's just another reason why we think it's a great time to start looking at these policies and what we can do to support these SACs and DACs, DAC and the SACs rather. So a lot of that work this year with that in mind for the DAC has been helping individual school accountability committees and the DAC itself move towards a place of functioning with fidelity. We had a training early on this year, which principals attended, SAC members and DAC members attended. And we came, became very clear that a lot of people really don't know what SACs are supposed to do, what the DAC is supposed to do, and how they're supposed to function. And so a policy revision seemed like one of many tools in which to approach that problem and provide some clarity. Next slide, Chris. So a very cursory overview of the existing policies, AE and AER. AE establishes the process for creating SACs, the requirement for having SACs and DACs. Our current policy points to state statute as a source for finding the roles and the powers and duties of those committees. And it establishes that they are public meetings and require public notice. AER is a regulation of that policy. It's much larger. The existing BVSD policy really limits its scope to rules for membership. And then it says that DAC members and SAC members should be provided with a copy of state statutes and rules for their operation. But unless individual schools know where to look, they're really left in the dark there. So a little bit of an overview of this process. The Policy Subcommittee was made up of members on the DAC who represent all levels of schools within the district and represent schools from all areas of the district. So all of the area networks are represented in this committee. There was, we worked through with consensus-based decision-making and had multiple feedback loops with the DAC as a whole and modified our thinking based on the feedback from that larger group. Starting from scratch, this Policy Subcommittee first reviewed our existing policies. And then we started to look towards other Colorado School District policies, AE and AER, just to get a sense of what, what, what policies beyond our district look like. Then we identified gaps between state statute, the CASB example policies, AE and AER, our BVSD policies, and our current practice. After sort of analyzing all of that, we identified opportunities for improvement, revision, and made our comments and our suggested revisions can be found in Appendix A of that board document. They're really lengthy and so we chose not to go through each of those in high and extreme detail, but that's there for your reference. And if you have any questions about that now or in the future, please feel free to ask us. But in the end, overwhelmingly, at our April meeting, 93% of DAC members voted to approve these suggested revisions that we're about to outline. So Policy AE is a smaller of those two policies. And there were two minor modifications that we, the DAC, thought would be helpful in addressing within that policy. The first one gets at how DAC and SAC members become DAC and SAC members. So the existing BVSD policy says the board shall appoint DAC members and that school principal shall appoint SAC members. But the state statute allows for a more expansive approach to that. State statute actually says that the board can either appoint or create a process for election for the SAC and DAC members. And our recommendation would be to add that more expansive language within our board, our current existing board policy. Elections have benefits in that it raises visibility of these organizations. It can allow for a greater diversity of members that might want to be, individuals that might want to become members that people just might not be aware of. So that was one change in that section. And then another small change in that section was around how SAC meeting notices are posted. So currently, BVSD Policy AE says that meeting notices shall be posted in the schools. Most of parental communication now is via digital means, so emails, email newsletters, text messages, messages through apps. And now all of our parents have the ability to show up on a physical school campus. And so by allowing school districts to post, to have these meetings posted by the school allows for more, again, opportunity for parents to become engaged, become aware about these committees, so they have an opportunity to ultimately provide input and positively impact their schools. Dovetailing with that is a request that those meeting notices be posted at least one week in advance. Current policy does not give a timeline. And so if a meeting notice was posted a day or two before, a lot of parents, particularly working parents, would not have the opportunity to change schedules, find childcare, make the necessary accommodations, whatever they may be, to attend those meetings. And so again, that minor modification really allows for more, a greater variety of parents to participate in addressing concerns and celebrations and just really being more well-informed about what's going on within the school. Before we move on to more, some policy revisions within AER, I want to pause and see if board members have any questions for us about our process, some rationale, or suggested revisions to Policy AE. Thank you. I'm going to just go down the line because I can't see anyone in the gallery with the screen. So Richard, any questions?
No, I just want to thank Nicole and the committee that worked on this. And also thank you very much for pointing out the fact that according to state statute, the DAC should reflect the representation of the community. Couple of questions real quickly. One is, does it now reflect the representation of the community? And also, how are we currently appointing DAC members?
Those are great questions. So currently, the process for becoming a SAC or DAC member is we ask principals to, who they think would be a good fit for the DAC. And then that list is brought to the board for approval. We also have a process for individuals to apply on our DAC website to be either a school member or to be an at-large member. Our DAC bylaws allow for 15% of our, up to 15% of our membership to be at-large, which means they don't represent a specific school. They could represent the community. So that's the current process and that really does not align with our policy in itself, which was a reason to address that. With your question on how well DAC and SACs represent the diversity of the district or the schools, you know, I'm going to be honest and say not as well as we would like it to be represented. And that's something we've been working really hard on, reaching out to our schools, particular schools that are Title I schools or have a high proportion, higher percent of their population that come from black communities, Latinx communities. We're really trying hard to reach out and we're doing a better job of recruiting a greater diverse membership.
Any other questions, Richard?
No, thank you very much, Nicole.
Kathy?
Just thank you, no questions.
Donna? Okay, I'll skip to Kitty.
Nothing, but thanks so much for all your hard work.
Lisa?
No, just another thank you.
Stacy?
Not now, but thank you, Nicole.
I just have a quick question. I don't know if it relates to this or the regulation, but do we have it? And I didn't see it. Could we add that, remind parents or put it that in the public notice that these are open meetings to the public, to the community?
They have been in, when schools in session, they were regularly included in the messaging from the district at the bottom. DAC meetings are posted, have to be posted, much like board meetings with public notice. And we had recently requested the district to put out like an advertisement to just know to let parents know that we exist if they're interested in joining. So we're, I mean, we're, we're trying. But that's a great thought to continue, reminder to continue those efforts.
Well, and also, any meeting is open to be observed by anybody, correct?
Correct, yeah. And we like seeing students come and some people are coming, but it's a good reminder that anybody can attend at any time.
Yeah, I think there was a misperception that you, it was sort of an invite-only event back when I was on it. So, all right, do you want to move on to the next portion?
Sure. And actually, at this point, I'm going to turn the mic over to Kevin Riordan.
Thank you. So a key addition in the AER revised policy is the addition of top-level purpose statements for both the DAC and the SACs, something that wasn't there in the, in the previous policy. And, you know, not only is this obviously best practice, and indeed, looking at these other school districts, we found comparable purpose statements in their policies. But it's also, you know, I think fundamental to provide a clear statement of the value that these accountability committees can provide to all the stakeholders. And by stating this upfront, making clear what the shared understanding is of how these committees, you know, fit in and provide feedback to the school and district administration and to the board. You know, a big advantage is we feel this will make it more clear to parents and community members why their participation in these committees is important and is valued by the district. And by outlining the different areas where the DAC and the SACs can provide their input to their local school, to district leadership, and to the board, you know, parents and other community members will really feel more empowered and engaged and willing to, you know, be involved with these committees, which has always been a challenge throughout the district. It also serves to distinguish the SAC from other volunteer groups at the school level and distinguish the DAC from the other parent and community committees at the district level. So in drawing up these purpose statements, you know, we were guided strongly by the language of the state statute and making sure it aligned with that. But we also looked at trying to sort of distill out some of the positive experiences we had on, you know, from the DAC in our interaction with the district, especially in recent years, and the experiences, you know, from well-functioning SACs in other schools. You know, we tried to dig down into the meaning, you know, of this sort of vague term accountability. You know, what does that mean for these groups? You know, how do we frame that within the broader, you know, aspects of school and district governance and oversight? You know, we wanted to avoid duplicating existing, you know, channels and means to provide that accountability. But at the same time, we thought it was important to provide by this, with the SACs and the DAC, provide an independent avenue where we could have communication that would come up from the grassroots level, you know, from the individual schools and come up to the DAC and be brought up to the district and the board. And so that was, you know, one of our guiding principles in putting together the purpose statements. And as, you know, we took that purpose statement and we went through the policy defining, outlining the district and school accountability committees, we also thought about how to incorporate mechanisms in there throughout the policy that would really allow the committees to execute on this, this purpose. So it was, you know, sort of this, this broad view that the purpose statements gave us. And so the purpose statements are in the beginning of each section of the revised policy. And you can certainly look at that in the next slide here, Chris. We just, you know, brought out some of the key statements that were, they're in those purpose statements, you know, that we thought were some of the important aspects, you know, obviously providing that effective accountability. And we, you know, we envisioned that as a, through mechanisms of information exchange. And, you know, that just contributes to ensuring transparency throughout the district. The SACs and the DAC should be involved, you know, have meaningful consultation in looking at school performance and in the improvement planning aspects of the district. The timely evaluation of that performance then, you know, getting the feedback and seeing, you know, on a, you know, you know, fairly rapid kind of timescale, you know, how are things going year to year is important. As I mentioned before, you know, this, providing this avenue for the free flow of information, good, bad, otherwise, you know, throughout from the, from the schools up through the district and reaching out to the community. And finally, you know, this idea where the SACs provide sort of an autonomous way to engage with parents, to get them involved with the school leadership, and then, you know, bring that, anything up with the district and the board. So, you know, those are the broad outlines of the purpose statements that are in the revised policies now. And we, you know, thought that was a key aspect of the, should make these policies, you know, a little more engaging for parents. With that?
Is there another slide, or should we do?
No, no. Maybe it's easier to go through the rest of the slides and have the questions at the end unless there's something.
Now, let's go ahead and do it since we have to do the round robin.
Yeah. So, yeah, hand it off now.
Great. Hi, I'm John Klasby, and I will be your guide for the next three slides. Thank you for attention on this material. We put a lot of time into it, and we appreciate you giving us your attention. I've got two daughters in BVSD. One will start LMS next fall, and the other will turn to Coal Creek next year. So, we've got kids that have been in the system for about four years and, or six years, oh my God, six years. And it looks like I've got about 10 more years to go. So, I'm glad to be a part of this. And I want to frame this next section on membership with the starting point we have is that BVSD is full of great people. Yeah, you know, our community is full of motivated, interested, active folks. We've got great folks on district staff in the school buildings and our school communities. And part of what we're trying to do in looking at this policy is how do we keep these great people involved in our schools? How do we get them involved and how do we keep them involved? And so, while policy doesn't always inspire an outpouring of volunteer energy, it can sometimes be an obstacle to that kind of volunteer energy. And so, as we went through these revisions, we were looking to see, how can we make this user-friendly so that when parents who are interested or family members who are interested, community members who are interested in serving, look up, look to these policies to see what is it that these committees do? It's intelligible and clear to them. And also, to make it so that the policy casts a broad net to encourage as many folks as possible from different backgrounds and walks of life to participate. And so, as we walk through these proposals, we have regarding membership, there are kind of two main themes, streamlining it to make it intelligible, and then substantive changes to make it broad-based. And so, on this slide, we talk about how we eliminated some redundancies, we organized some of the policies for clarity. If you look at the red line, that was part of the Board Packet, you'll find that there is a lot of, it looks like there are a lot of changes made, but in fact, much of it's just reordering where the text goes to make it read more cleanly and make it more clear. This bullet point about Note 1 and eligibility, that's specifically kind of a niche issue about BVSD employees and whether they can serve, be counted on some of the minimum membership requirements. And, you know, because that is a niche issue, we moved it down into a footnote rather than having it be front and center in the text. And then, in the interest of streamlining, we moved a number of housekeeping issues to the bylaws. So rather than have it being district policy where it may come up for review, you know, every several years, and if it turns out to be problematic and, you know, all of our hard effort had unintended consequences that we, turns out we need to tweak, we can do that easily by changing the bylaws rather than having to come back to the Board and change policy. So issues like removal of membership, of members and filling vacancies, we propose be shifted into DAC bylaws rather than into the Board policy. Chris, could you go to the next slide? So here, it just talks about what the revisions are to the DAC membership. So there are two tiers, right? There's the DAC, which is the District Accountability Committee, which is one body, which has representatives from, which aspires to have representatives from each school in the district, comes together once a month and deals with issues that are statutorily defined. And then, there are also School Accountability Committees, the SAC. At our school, that often gets confused with school aftercare, and so if the lobbyist is still listening, and we can go back to state statute and change SAC into some other acronym, that would be welcome. But until that happens, we have the DAC and the SAC. So the DAC membership, we are proposing to mirror in AER what Nicole discussed in AE, to have the selection of those membership be shifted towards an election at the school level, which would then be approved by the Board. And so, the statute says that the, in the existing policy, says that the school board will determine DAC membership. And that isn't what happens in practice. In practice, there are names that are put forward, and then the Board approves a slated of names. And we are conforming this policy to the actual practice where the names are determined at the school level. So we're pushing this down into the grassroots, down to where at the school building level to get those folks identified by the SACs and then approved by the Board. And the goal is to have, you know, broad group that reflects all parts of our community geographically, but also parents that have students of different backgrounds. So, FRL students and GT students and students with IEPs. And, you know, the goal is to push this down to the school and empower the school to identify parents who are representative of the community as a whole. This last bullet point just is a kind of clarifying to make it easier for the process to go smoothly, to have those DAC members identified early in the spring so that when the Board reconvenes in the fall, they can approve that. So on our next slide, we're moving from the DAC membership to the SAC membership. So at the school level, we are also clarifying how members are chosen. So, the way the statute works is it kind of sets a default, and then each district is empowered to opt out of that default and to go, to expand upon the minimums required by the statute. And the current default is that principals appoint SAC members. And the strong sense we had in our Board Meeting with the DAC or Committee Meeting is that there should be flexibility so that parents are selecting the SAC members and not just appointed by the principals. And that seems consistent to me with the mission of providing accountability. You know, if the principal's just selecting individuals who are then holding him accountable to some degree and working with him, that it would be more effective to have that done by the community as a whole. We also clarified in here that every BVSD school, including charter schools, establish a SAC with a minimum of seven members. That's in the statute. And we reiterate that those parents should be from broadly representative groups. We expanded on the statutory definition of what a community member is. It says someone participating in business or industry. And we propose that you adopt additional language that says, you know, business can be in the social sector, not-for-profit businesses, so that it's not so narrowly defined. And then here, the elections, you know, many schools are just lucky to get seven folks together who are willing to invest their time in this. And so, we don't want to create obstacles to getting people involved. And so, we propose flexible language so that there's a preference for elections, but there's some flexibility depending on the needs of the school to identify those members. And then, lastly, we also propose that term length be increased. And that's because there's just a steep learning curve to getting your hands, you know, around, getting your arms around all the issues that you have to deal with on a SAC. You know, you're looking at school data, you're looking at school budgets, you're looking at school improvement plans, and, you know, one-year cycle is just not enough to kind of have an educated opinion and provide useful feedback on those issues. So, we recommend that be extended to two years. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris.
So hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay? So I'm Chris Haynes. I'm the DAC representative from Creekside Elementary, where my son is finishing up his kindergarten year through home learning. So, I'm very happy to be serving on this policy subcommittee, and I'm happy to be here presenting to you all, and I'm thankful for your attention, as John said. So the last major bucket of proposed revision that I'm going to talk through is what we're naming the Powers and Duties section for both the DAC policy and the SAC policy in AER. So part of the idea behind paying attention to the Powers and Duties section is to pull from statute in alignment with the sort of overall push toward clarity, the specific powers and duties and scope of DAC and SAC, and extend what Kevin had talked about in his presentation a few minutes ago on defining mechanisms for making it possible for DACs and SACs to execute on those powers and duties, sort of all flowing down from that sense of renewed purpose in those purpose statements. So there's a few kind of key elements that we're proposing along the long list of revisions in this section of the policy. I think the first is to make those statutory responsibilities more visible and transparent in the policy so that as people are reading through those policies and aligning with the new purpose statements, they understand what the extension of that purpose really is and what scope they have control over and can participate in as members. So this provides a layer of clarity. It allows for a broader distribution of stakeholders to have one consolidated place they can look to, to refer back. And it also aligns what BVSD policy is doing with what we're seeing in some of the other school districts to kind of keep everything on the same page. And I think perhaps one of the most important contributions we're making in the proposed revisions for the Powers and Duties section is to really highlight the transparency of information flow, as we talked about in the Purpose Statement section. So, what we're calling for is a process where, when the DAC especially, and at times the SAC can execute on its purpose of providing written recommendations on the variety of items that are within its scope, that there's a feedback loop where school leadership, district leadership, and the Board can provide written responses back to the DAC and create a process of documenting when the recommendations that these committees make are decided upon when actions are taken based on those recommendations, and specifically when actions are decided to not be taken on those recommendations. And that helps with the last point here, which is creating a kind of record of the institutional knowledge of both the school and the collection of schools that the DAC represents, so that all of those bodies and all of the individual members of those groups can pursue the sense of accountability, the sense of transparency, and the sense of actionable recommendations that is called for in statute. So the idea, as I said again in recap, of the expanding on the Powers and Duties section is to kind of create the application layer of the purpose statements that we're going through earlier in the policy. I have to switch my own slides. I was about to call on myself to switch my slides. So what we have on this slide here is just a very quick kind of high-level map of some of the elements in the revised Powers and Duties sections, and we've combined DAC and SAC on the same slide just because there's a lot of parallels in there. So we've proposed including specifically all the statutory powers and duties in the policy itself with reference back to statute to clarify and make visible all the full scope of those actions. These sections now call out more clearly the need for bylaw creation and adoption of these two, of DAC and the distributed set of SACs across the district. As we've mentioned in previous parts of this presentation, they call for elections of DAC representatives as co-chairs or co-chairs, and same with SAC. And again, as I said, there's a real emphasis on the transmission of institutional knowledge and the transfer of institutional knowledge across these bodies. And that specifically calls back to what we're highlighting in the purpose statements as that function of DAC and SAC as being an independent sort of chain of knowledge transmission across different stakeholders to make sure that everyone is communicating and on the same page. So I think the key elements in the Powers and Duties section again are creating a sense of, a set of mechanisms for executing on the purpose by clarifying what exactly is put in scope for these committees by statute, and then defining mechanisms for being able to execute on that scope. Creating a feedback loop where, when these bodies, SAC and DAC, make recommendations within their scope, there's a sense of when decisions are made and when actions are taken based on those recommendations. And then reinforcing that internal sense of institutional knowledge transfer and ensuring that all members are able to make good on the commitments that they're called upon for these committees to make. And so I think at this point, it bounces back to Nicole, yes? For some final thoughts?
I think so. So, in addition to those larger chunks, the purpose statement, powers and duties, membership provisions, the DAC is also recommending a few housekeeping items. So, within the policy, to directly reference state statutes and other pertinent BVSD policies. And that just allows stakeholders to more quickly find detailed source information, again, provides another level of clarity, and can improve communication channels a lot of times as, in DAC chair, I get questions from SACs, from DAC members, like, we're having problems with this, who do I talk to? And so, if, you know, they don't have to dig through our nuanced policies, which are really hard to turn up unless, you know, the key codes, having those included within this policy can help guide that a little bit. And then, try to make the language between the DAC and the SAC sections look more similar. Or, as was previously mentioned, we reorganized some sections. So a lot of the red in the red line documents in the Board Packet is simply due to reorganization. And ultimately, our goal here is to create greater clarity and transparency around the purpose and the responsibilities of these accountability systems, in hopes that they result in, and just knowing that they'll result in, increased awareness, increased participation from a wide variety of stakeholder groups, and that ultimately, with that participation, will have positively impact, positively impact individual schools, BDC as a whole, and our community. And so with that, we can turn it over for questions.
All right. Thank you so much. This is tremendously helpful, and thank you for the walkthrough to help us get more context on why you're proposing these changes. It really helps to hear more about it. So I'll just go down and ask if any Board members have questions, starting with Richard.
Nicole and Committee, tremendous work that you just took us through. I mean, it was, it's a lot to digest. So thank you very much. The question that I have, I think it's probably for Rob, Dr. Anderson, do you, and for you too, Nicole, do you get translation services when you have your meetings, your DAC meetings? Are they available for you?
So we ask members if they need translation services, and nobody's requested them as of yet. We do translate our meeting minutes and our agendas are posted with English and Spanish side by side.
Thank you for that. Would it be helpful if, as you're recruiting, or maybe you're doing this already, as you're recruiting a more diverse group of DAC members, to announce the fact that translation is available and all that wonderful stuff?
That's a great point. We can definitely do that.
Is that it, Richard?
That's it.
Okay, Kathy?
No, I just want to say thanks. I personally rely on DAC a ton for the input that you give us, so thank you for diving into the policy. I know it's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Donna?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Kitty?
Yes, thank you for, that was a ton of work, and I really appreciate you all doing it. And it's great to see so many volunteers who are really committed. And it's great to see so many volunteers who are really committed to the district. I do have one question about the bylaws. So were you envisioning that every SAC would write their own bylaws? Would there be guidelines for here, best practices for what should be in bylaws? What were you thinking about that?
So end of last year, or the beginning of this year, the DAC actually published and voted to approve an example, a template for SACS to adopt as bylaws, and that they could edit and make changes that felt pertinent to their individual schools. And so those are available on the DAC website. And we mentioned those and made those available during our training as well. So giving the support that's needed to help with that, sort of based on current existing policy and what our DAC bylaws look like, but then also align the flexibility for individual schools to modify as they see fit. So that was our, that was one thing we went after this year to help in that process.
And then the next question I have is probably for Rob. Because if statute says that all the schools have to have SACS and the districts have to have a DAC, what do we do about schools that don't have SACS?
I think that's the problem that we've been working on for the past couple of years, working with principals. I would say that we have been working really hard to ensure that principals know and understand the value of SACS and DAX. And we have provided training for our principals this year on how do you include your school accountability committee through the UIP process? And so I would, you know, my hopes are is that by reviewing policy, making some great changes, continuing to value the work of district accountability committee and school accountability committee, that we will, that we will continue to increase the number of schools that have functioning SACS. I mean, I think you can have two problems. One, where they just aren't able, unable to recruit or get the parents, right? That's one issue. Then the other issue is where it hasn't been a priority to do so. And if we've made it a priority and we're still struggling, I think that's one situation. I would say the other situation is something we've been working with our principals on over the course of the year to ensure that we have better compliance.
So are there any statutory penalties for not having SACS?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good.
Kathleen might have some information on that, but none that I am aware of as far as penalties either.
Right. I was just going to confirm that.
I would just offer, anecdotally, our school has gone from zero to 60. We had no SAC last year. We have a new principal, Brian Munoz, who came to us from LMS. He's now principal of Coal Creek. And he has embraced the SAC. He recruited teachers, so we have a teacher representative from every grade. And we meet monthly. And he's been a great evangelist to other principals and telling how beneficial this has been and getting him up to speed. So in addition to all the challenges of being a brand-new principal, he's really taken on the SAC and made something great from it.
Kitty, anything else? Okay. Lisa?
Thank you so much for all of that. The one question I have is, are the goals of, on the one hand, increasing membership of parents for free and reduced lunch and ELL and non-white students? And on the other hand, prioritizing elections as the primary selection process potentially at odds with one another?
Who wants to take that one?
So, you know, I've read the presentation on membership. And I think there are potentially intention. I wouldn't call them at odds. And the elections, you know, what we find in practice when we survey the current DAC members and we ask them about what their SACS look like, most of them are just feel lucky to have enough parents who are willing to come together to be a part of this. And so we, at present, are not anticipating there being contested elections where there are many folks running for seats and some folks are losing. And the majority is dominating a demographic minority in the school. The goal with elections is to have it be the voice of the people and not just the voice of the principal. But of course, we want our principals to be engaged in encouraging people to run for that office and identifying people who are knowledgeable, capable, already involved. We have the great benefit of having a former, two former PTA presidents who are now serving on our SAC. And we are intentionally looking to reach out as a SAC to find more members to fill in those voices that are not presently represented. And so I think it's a good point to say that there is a risk of that, those things being intention. But I think in practice, most schools are not voting people off the SAC. They're just really trying to get people onto the SAC. And we thought a shift to elections would be a way to publicize that instead of having it just be a kind of insider's club with the folks who are already familiar with the principal and who the principal is already comfortable with.
Lisa, anything else?
No, I'm sure that there's not huge numbers of folks vying for contested elections. And do you think sometimes having that additional step can be enough of a barrier? That it can be off-putting to people who might already be difficult to recruit? And I suppose I would just suggest that moving forward, maybe that's something that you all can be working closely with principals and encouraging them to remember that it's only a preferred way and not the only way to bring folks on. And that if there are people who would be phenomenal for your committee and who would meet some of those needs, but for whom an election is a big ask, that we can find additional ways to bring them in and prioritize that.
I think that's great feedback. We heard that from some DAC members. And we try to build flexibility into the recommendations. And we can revisit those and make sure there's, it's clear that there are many paths to putting together a representative board.
I agree. Lisa, any other questions? Stacy?
Yeah, thank you. As a SAC chair for many years, I appreciate the clarity that you have added to the policy. I do want to reiterate what Lisa just mentioned, which was, I was going to mention it as well, but I think elections could be a barrier to getting those representative SACs. And I also want to comment that I think how it actually happens in practice isn't the principal picking people. It's the SAC recruiting people who they think would be interested and willing to do it, and then asking the principal to appoint them. So I think it kind of happens a different way. And so I'm glad that you put that the elections is just the preferred way. But I do worry that just, oh, there's an election could keep people away from doing that. My experience was that if just a direct ask from somebody on SAC is enough to get them there. And I mean, it would be amazing if there were enough people interested that you could actually have an election. I'd be interested to know if there's any SAC in our district that is at that point. That would be interesting to know. But the other thing I wanted to mention was that back in the day, it wasn't called SAC. It was called FIT, School Improvement Team. So it moved from FIT to SAC. So I'm not so sure you'll be able to get it from SAC to something else. And again, I really appreciate the purpose statement and the clarity. I was on two different SACs and they did completely different things. So I appreciate all the work you did on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo what Stacy says. As a former SAC person and DAC person, this clarity is fantastic. And especially just to start honing in on how people will be chosen to serve and how to focus more on diversity. I did have a question. Is, do we have childcare for SAC right now? I know we do for all the SACS, but for DAC?
We, again, that's another question we ask for attendance, prior to meeting attendance, about childcare. And we haven't gotten any bites on that. And some folks have brought their kids and we've allowed them to attend. But nobody's asked in that format, in the format for childcare.
Okay. I don't think we got a lot for board meetings either. Is that right, Rob? Or Laura?
Yeah, I don't believe we got anyone.
No one ever took us up on childcare for the board either. But, okay.
With reference to the elections, as, we use that term because it's one of the two options provided in statute. In practice, yes, it's, our goal is to make it more of a parent nomination process rather than leaving that wholly in the hands of the school principal. So whether or not it's a full-fledged, you know, election or, you know, but the idea was they would come up from the parents, the membership and, you know, proposal of the membership, so.
And that also, you know, I think over the course of the past two years, there have been some struggles with who gets to be on SACS and who doesn't get to be on SACS and the DAC. And so that was, again, just another way to make it clear that it's open to everybody. We want it, that those committees are designed to be diverse, intended to be diverse. And we just don't want, we don't want gatekeepers. We want to minimize any potential for gatekeepers, however that gatekeeper might exist.
Kitty, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I have a question. And this isn't really, it's not for the DAC folks here. It's probably for Kathleen. When did it change from School Improvement Team to School Accountability Committee? And what changed in terms of the mandates? Because I was chair of the FIT team too for a few years.
You know, Kitty, I don't actually know the answer to that off the top of my head. I'm pretty sure that it's been SAC since I got to the state. So I'm looking at the reg right now.
It's not that important. I was just curious.
Yeah, maybe it was 2011 is what it looks like from looking at the statute book. And as the accountability law has been updated, this section of law has been touched several times. In fact, not since 2015, but five or six times since 2009. So it's a fairly active area, that's for sure. And I really appreciate all the work you have done. Now you know how I suffer dealing with policy. And I don't get a subcommittee except unlimited issues. So I really appreciate all your work.
Stacy, I saw your hand go up.
I was going to mention that it's the same legislation that created SACPI that strengthened SACS, that made them SACS and not FIT. Have that for a lot of acronyms. Yeah, so the State Advisory Council for Parent Involvement in Education was created with a similar statute that included, to strengthen SACS and DAX. And Richard could probably talk more about that, but it's not necessary. But anyway, that's, I think, when it changed from FIT to SAC.
That is great school history knowledge. Amazing. Okay. Any other questions for the phenomenal members of the AE and AER committee? All right. Well, again, another heartfelt thing.
I do want to offer one more comment on this issue of collecting the members together. You know, I think in a well-functioning school where the principal is working together with the school community and the parent community, that'll be a collaborative process of the existing SAC and the principal kind of identifying people they would like to serve and reaching out to them and getting them nominated. But the policy also needs to cover the situation where you have a principal that doesn't want a SAC, looking at the budget and looking at the school data. And we polled our members and got information that there's a wide spectrum of principal attitudes towards this. The majority are welcoming. Some are kind of, you know, not engaged at all, and some are resistant. And so as we write in this policy, we want to make sure that the policy gives people a piece of paper that they can go to the principal or to the district and say, listen, the statute says we're supposed to have this and we don't have this. And so as you draft the ultimate policy, just keep in mind that the highly productive SACS that you may have been a part of and may have been leaders of are not the only SACS that are out there. And draft something in there for the other situations that are inevitably going to arise.
And the same thing goes for DACs. I think we're really fortunate right now to have leadership teams that value transparency and value accountability and input from a wide variety of stakeholders. But that has not always been the case. And it may not always be the case. And so, you know, preparing for all the situations that may arise, depending on who's, again, who is at the helm of the district or the schools, was one of the goals in these revisions. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, great point. Thank you again for all the thought that went into this work. It's fantastic. So with that, we have one other policy study item.
Can I make a, just make a comment? Just thinking Nicole, John, Chris, Kevin, just lots and lots of really roll-up-your-sleeves work. I truly value DAC. They've been great thought partners. And I think that it's important for us as a district to ensure that we do have parents and community members that are empowered to help push us, hold us accountable, share ideas. Because I just really appreciate their partnership. And there's a lot of work that went into that, and so I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, guys. Have a good rest of your meeting. Thanks for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the next item are technology policies, JRCB, JS, JSR, and JSE. Rob, do you want to kick this off?
Yes. So, board members, we've been working on these policies for, we're coming up on two years in regards to some of the technology policies that we've had as a district. I would say that last year, we made some significant improvements and changes. We've continuously been meeting with both a group of technology parents who had concerns, as well as principal advisory committee, teacher advisory committee, to see what and how we could adjust this policy to meet, best meet our needs. And I think that we're at a place where we're ready to bring this back. And with that, I will turn it over to Kathleen, who will walk you through where we are at. And if she needs any support, I'm sure she will let us know. We're here for you, Kathleen.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I feel like the kid who went second giving their book report. And I don't have a extremely detailed PowerPoint like our friends just presented. Fortunately, I think this is an issue this board has spent a lot of time on. So what we have before you are what we are bringing back following our last work session in October of 2019. At that time, you asked us to go and get some feedback as to how this would look. And boy, we've gotten a lot of input on how important technology can be over these last couple of weeks. But honestly, this, when it comes right down to what we're proposing for you, it's a pretty straightforward change. A lot of the work we're doing in policy that our DAC committee members really just talked about is cleaning it up and clarifying and streamlining. When you have a policy book as large as Boulder Valley's, you need to make some cuts. So what we want to do is make sure we've eliminated redundancies. And the JRCB policy is a great example. That policy is intended to set forth the requirements of state law that come out of the Student Data Transparency and Security Act. And somehow, along the way, it got layered in with students' ability to amend their educational records and a lot of irrelevant steps. So JRCB has just been stripped down so that it clearly tells us what we need to do if we have a breach and what the requirements of state law are. Then when you look at policy JS and the regulation JS-R and JS-E, this is where we've really spent a lot of our time making sure that we heard from parents and we reflected back the sort of information they were asking us for. So JS will have our broad principal statements. JSR is where you'll see the level of detail that we really need around some of the individual security aspects, not the vendor and software security that is addressed in JRCB. And then JSE is our proposed new exhibit. We are moving to one consent form to address elementary and secondary. And really, we have increased significantly the level of detail in that consent form so that parents really know where to find all of the detailed information they may be seeking. And while we had and um, while we had originally talked to the board about a tiered consent that would have some sort of mid-level consent that would allow access to some areas of Google um, that uh, people seem to be more comfortable with and restrict and allow other families to just limit access then to that core service. The truth is, the technology is not that good. It would be a false promise to families that we could do something that the technology platform doesn't support. We also had a lot of input from our teachers and our principals about what it looks like and the ability to say, yes, we need to do something different when kids aren't allowed to access technology. But trying to come up with a very nuanced plan that would accommodate multiple levels really became an impossible task. So you layer on the technical difficulties. And what we've got is a much more detailed consent form that allows parents to say, yes, my student can use district technology or no, my student cannot. Because it had been such a long time and a board election since the last time you looked at this uh, policy, we did put it on study this, for this meeting um, with the plan to bring it back. As Dr. Anderson mentioned, it's important that we get something adopted. Really, we want to be in a place where these policies are ready for our public to see in June so they can start completing, completing the annual data updates that we need around enrollment.
Okay. All right, um, uh, Richard, do you want to start with any questions?
Uh, thank you, Kathleen. It's again, you know, you're a yeoman in terms of the work that you produce. Uh, even though you don't have a magnificent PowerPoint like the last presentation, but that was right on. The question that I have is on the consent form. And the question that just really kind of struck me is the last sentence before the kid's sign and the parent's sign is if the student does not have consent to use who this or technology and resources, then the family and principal will need to discuss an alternative plan. Uh, what happens, you know, if a school, if there's forty families or fifty families in a school, I'm not sure. I don't think that'll happen, but what if it did? It seemed like that principal spent a lot of time talking about alternative plans. And especially if there's multiple students involved in a family. So my question is, um, what would those plans look like, I guess? I I.
Yes, thank you for that question. Um, I will be very candid. I recommended language that said the family has to come up with a proposal if they don't want to use technology. And then the schools can just, uh, the schools couldn't help parents understand when they've hit the target, but really putting more onus on families who are deciding not to use the technology. And this is the language that was recommended when we really talked to our teachers, our principals, and our academic team. They didn't like my language that what, that really tried to shift some of that burden. Um, Andrew, do you have numbers that you could talk about that might be helpful?
Um, we don't have any um, rule specifics. I know of one family um, over time that is um, has asked to opt out of all technology. Um, but there hasn't been a wave of um, a number of families doing this. So to your point, Richard, um, we do believe that it would be a small number that would likely opt out. And then um, I think it's a discussion with the principal and teachers at that point to figure out what an appropriate plan would be.
You know, I go back to to even discussions in the past as it relates to the technology platform and a lot of the issues that our former uh, school board member, Shelley Benford, uh, talked about a lot is that the uh, uh, the use of technology, uh, is that, is that something that will replace or, you know, the curriculum? Because it seems to me like, like uh, we have an obligation to make sure the kids get educated, whether they have technology or not. And you know, where are we with that?
Well, if I understand your point, Richard, I think we really are trying to make sure that we're having a very clear conversation with our families about how we use technology. Um, and I do think that that was one of the gifts that Shelley left is this, the importance that we're really, really clear with families about what they're consenting to and how it will be used in classrooms. Um, so I I'm not sure that that fully answers your question. Uh, I don't know if anyone on the academic side has more input on how this really looks when a family wants to opt out completely. I think Andrew has said, oh, sorry, Rob.
That's, that's okay. I I I mean, a- as a reminder to the board, you know, we've uh, Sam Messier and I have been meeting with parents for for a good part of two years. Um, you know, that I think that some of them still have technological concerns. Um, I think that, you know, the direction that we tried to give to Kathleen and others was let's try to find a middle ground, see if there is a way where um, when when parents or kids get outside of these core services that um, that that there's a way we could do a tiered consent. And we just were technologically unable to do that. Um, so I think, you know, as with most issues, right, what I would, I would suggest to parents or or anyone having an issue is meet with your teacher, right? Meet with the school. Now, I don't know what those things will look like. Oftentimes, you know, as a former teacher and principal, when you sit down and meet, you can actually clear up, right, some of the misconceptions. And if there's some slight accommodations that kids, that need to be made for kids, I think teachers and parents can work those things out. Um, I think that uh, you know, that that we want to provide that opportunity for folks to have those conversations. And I think what we'll be able to find out, once this policy is implemented, implemented, is we can learn from those who do choose to opt out, because we'll know who they are. We can learn the accommodations that have worked and have not worked and continue to get better uh, moving forward. But we felt like um, a a a piece in there to really encourage a conversation um, was was the right um, and best step we could take, um, given the challenges.
Richard, do you have any more questions right now?
No, just thank you.
Okay, Kathy?
No questions.
Okie doke. Uh, Donna?
Um, I don't have any questions. I just appreciate that we've involved so many stakeholders and Shelley Benford's guidance in the past. Uh, there's so many that I I'm glad that our district and and Rob has pulled together so many people within the community to voice their concerns. And we've made um, accommodations appropriately and listened to people. Thanks.
Kitty? Um, yes, I want to echo all the thanks to the parents, to Kathleen, to Shelley. Um, I hope she's watching this meeting. Probably not, though. Um, one thing, and you know that I'm the one who nitpicks about how everything is written. And I was, it's the JC, now I've got it off my screen, JCBR, is that what it is? Anyway, there are a ton of things in there that I think, once you clear up all of the stuff that's been deleted, you'll notice, because some of it was difficult to read. But I think that'll go away as soon as you, you know, clean it up and you'll you'll see what's there. So I'm not going to say anymore about that.
Okay, uh, Lisa? Okay, Stacy? All right, um, yeah, just uh, Kathleen, thanks for doing all this. And I really appreciate you reducing the number of pages on policy. My, I think you know that my strong opinion is once something gets to be that long, it's just wildly ineffective because it's impossible to navigate that much of it. So I appreciate the simplification and the clarification, both for this policy and for the policies from the DAC. Um, so with no further questions on this, that means that um, we move to our next item, which is agenda setting. And the, um, so we we have, you'll notice that you were given some doodle pools and um, for some additional meetings that we're going to put in um, this year. So we have added um, a midday meeting on May twenty-sixth for student enrollment and the superintendent's evaluation. Um, and then on June sixteenth, from twelve-thirty to three-thirty, we're going to be getting updates on several of the strategic plan initiatives. And uh, and what's nice is that we'll be able to put those in the context of our new budgetary environment um, at that time. Uh, depending on how this whole budget process goes, we may need to add another budget meeting. Um, and that's about it. So any other agenda items or comments about this schedule? Um, so I'm trying to see if I can see all of you. I can. Okay. So then I will um, say that our meeting is adjourned. Bye.